Everybody has their microphones on and cell phones off? Great. Morning, everybody. This is April 25th, Jackson County Planning Commission for nine o'clock session. And we'll approve the minutes of the meetings for three different meetings, January 11th, February 22nd, and April 11th, 2024. Yes, let's do that.
Commissioner Daley?
Here.
Commissioner Elliott?
Here.
Commissioner Bennington?
Yep.
Commissioner Lavendino?
Here. Put that in the agenda next time for roll call first. Keeps my mind clear. Okay, I hope you've all had a chance to look at the minutes for those three meetings. I have one comment is, I know these are draft minutes, but if you could put the page numbers on the bottom, simple like that, because when I have to refer to something, well, I'll have to count the pages to get to it. Oh, they're on the top, aren't they?
I was gonna say, did you hear it?
They are. I was looking at the bottom, yeah. Never mind.
Do you want them moved?
No, I just didn't look at it. Okay. Um, any comments? On the first one for January 11th, Page Six, under White City Codified Ordinance Change. The language is a little bit awkward there, but I assume that the Board of Commissioners has been reviewing the commissions and committees, period. And then White City Planning Commission is noted in both the Codified Ordinance and the Land Development Ordinance, and discussion followed. What was the discussion? What was said? Why is that important?
You can eliminate that.
Okay. I just want to, yeah, and that kind of leads me into the next discussion of kind of a follow-up. And, you know, we say these things and then they just end at that point.
When we have a discussion, I don't take verbatim, so I may just quote the discussion followers. I always write everything.
Right. No recommendations were made or?
Right, yeah. It was in the discussion.
On that particular one, Tom, I think, the discussion was, should that verbiage White City Planning Commission be removed, since there isn't one and there doesn't seem to be any interest?
Yeah, I think I know the.
The argument was, it should be left there as a placeholder.
I thought it was gonna be removed the last night.
Well, I don't know what the final decision was. I can't remember.
That's what I wanted to know. It could go both ways and.
Do you remember, Patty, what that was? I don't think, I don't think there was one, maybe.
I think it's at a higher level than that.
Right.
Sure.
In my understanding, it was being resolved through rewording something to eliminate the White City Planning Commission. Is that correct, Ted? Yes. So, stay tuned, I guess. That's what's follow-up on that. And then the Commissioner's bio placed on the website. I don't know what the follow-up on that is. Brad said something about climate-friendly and equitable communities rules. You know, is there a follow-up on that? So, rather than have these things dead-end, it'd be nice to see how it continues or resolves.
You can have it happen.
That's kind of, I guess, what I'm asking for.
Mr. Chairman, as somebody who follows the procedures of other public bodies, it's been my experience that what the staff is following is a model that others use where, because all these meetings are recorded verbatim, if there is an interest to go back and end discussion, just the fact that discussion is noted, then if there is an interest, it's relatively easy to go back and listen to, or sometimes even a video of the actual, rather than trying to capture all that in the minutes.
I guess I'm not asking for a resolution or a decision or, you know, whatever, but just a follow-up. Okay, we'll take that in our next work session, or we'll put that in our annual plan of work. And that's the follow-up and closing the loop.
Chair, if I may address Ted Zook, Development Services Director. Just to clarify on two points for the White City Planning Commission.
Is that on? I don't hear it.
Red. It is on. That's apparently how low I talk. I'll try and talk a little louder. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on the White City Planning Commission, this was a decision that was initiated by the Board. They were looking at all commissions and all committees. And one of the items they wanted us to move forward was to eliminate the White City Planning Commission because, because of all the reasons we weren't getting quorum, we weren't getting members, and JCPC, Jackson County Planning Commission, is acting as the White City Planning Commission now. And I think some of the focus on the Board was to reduce redundancy, and this was one of those redundancy things. So, that's already been, uh, it's already been something that we're working on for the Board of Commissioners. It's taking a little bit of time because there's two things that have to happen. One is it has to be the hearing process for the Codified Ordinance change, and then it also resides in the Land Development Ordinance. So, we've got two things that are going at the same time. We're working with County Council on how we streamline that process. It hasn't come up on the Board's agenda yet, but it is something that we're working on, and that's at the direction of the Board. The other was on the discussion on the bills and the whether, whether the bios could get that put back on the website. That was an administrative decision. That's above my pay grade. And it was discussed that when we have our joint meeting, which I believe is June, May, next month, we'll be meeting with the Board as our joint Planning Commission, Board of Commissioner meeting, that if you had any concerns, you could, you can certainly bring them up then, and you'd be able to talk to the Board directly.
Okay, so bring it up then and see what they say and that'll.
Yeah, the purpose of the meeting is, you know, meet and greet and get everybody to see each other at least once a year, go over our work plan, go over our priorities and any issues that you would like to discuss with the Board, you know, you can then.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ted. Okay, I have no other comments on the.
I had one.
Okay.
For February 22nd, Mr. Brinkley's first name is Matt, not Mike, just on the front page of those.
That was done at the meeting too, and I was calling him Matt, really Mike. I didn't know him. Okay, any other comments? Hearing no more. I make the motion to approve the minutes for January 11th, February 22nd, and April 11th.
Second.
Commissioner Daley?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennington?
Yep.
Commissioner Lavendino?
Yes. Okay, so the housekeeping is done. Now we'll get into the hearing. So, this morning, it's Jackson County Planning Commission File Number 439-23-0001-LRP. There's a public hearing on a consideration of a minor comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for an exception to statewide planning goal 11 to allow the connection of an RVSS sewer line and to add the subject property to area of special concern ASC 2003-1, Goal 11 exception areas. So, there are a number of items that I'm required to address prior to the start of the hearing. The approval criteria used in making this decision are listed in entirety in the staff report. Please direct your testimony and evidence toward the applicable approval criteria. You may also direct your testimony to other criteria or policies of the comprehensive plan, land development ordinance, or other land use regulations which you believe apply to the decision now before the Jackson County Planning Commission. Remember that a failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to the issue will prevent appeal on that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. All participants who wish to speak must sign up on the sign-up sheet provided in the podium in front of me. County is making a verbatim recording of the hearing. In the event of an appeal, it will probably be necessary to transcribe it. Therefore, when you testify or comment, please speak loudly and clearly so that your testimony will be recorded. Begin by identifying yourself so that anybody reading a transcript of the record will know who is talking. We need to have you clearly identify yourself with your name, address for the record. Any written comments or other items of evidence must be submitted to the clerk and be marked as an exhibit for the record. So, today's procedure will be as followed. First, the Commissioners will indicate whether or not they've had an ex parte contact or have conflicts of interest. Second, we will have a report from the County Planning Staff. Commissioners may have questions of the staff at this time. Third, we will hear from the appellant, I'm sorry, the applicant, wrong word. Fourth, we will hear for those in favor of the amendments. Fifth, hear from those opposed to the amendments. Sixth, we will hear, then hear from those wishing to speak from a neutral or neutral position on the amendments. Seventh, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to any testimony or evidence. The testimony from the public and agencies will be limited to five minutes. I don't think that'll be a problem today. Anyone needing more time to testify than allotted should submit their additional comments in writing. And finally, once everyone has an opportunity to speak, the public hearing and associated public record will be closed. Unless the public hearing is continued by the Commissioners to a future date, the public hearing will be closed for deliberation by the Commissioners. Once a public hearing and public record are closed, the Chair will call for deliberations prior to making a decision. That was the end of the admonishments. At this time, I guess I need to know if any Commissioners have an ex parte contact or a conflict of interest.
None.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none. Okay, I guess we can start with presentation by Dawn.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dawn Ridman, Planner Three, 10 South Oakdale, Medford, Oregon 97501. The application before you requires an amendment of Jackson County Comprehensive Plan by taking an exception to statewide planning goal 11 in order to connect approximately 26.14 acres of exclusive farm use zone property located at 2871 Griffin Creek Road in Medford to Rogue Valley Sewer Services sewer line. Approval of the proposal would result in adding the subject property to areas, area, pardon me, of special concern 2003-1, Goal 11 exception areas, which is considered a minor map amendment. Before I get much further in the report, I do want to point out, there's two typos on Page 16 of the record. In the quoted paragraph, just below the finding paragraph about middle of the page, there should be a space between 11 and exception. And then just beneath that and kind of to the right a little, there's an extra word, "B" should not be there. It's, tasting room would need to use. So, I just wanted to point those out before the rest of the presentation. The subject property is located south of the city of Medford, city limits and south of that urban growth boundary, east of Griffin Creek Road, north of Glory Sea Road, and south of South Stage Road. The subject property is surrounded by rural residential, 2.5 urban residential 1, and exclusive farm use zoned parcels. The subject property is currently farmed as a vineyard, and I've got air photos showing from at least 1993, 1995 area that it's been farmed as a vineyard since at least then. The light green, blue areas shown on the map are areas already located within the Goal 11 exception overlay. Rogue Valley Sewer Services lines exist in Griffin Creek Road and Glory Sea Road. The subject property has frontage along both roads. The agent's findings don't specify whether the sewer connection would be specifically from Griffin Creek or Glory Sea Road, but I'm sure that we can ask the agent when it's his time to speak. Staff received two written comments from neighboring property owners that stated they have no comments, four written comments from neighboring property owners that recommend approval with no special conditions, and three written comments from neighboring property owners that encourage denial based on a variety of reasons. All received comments are located in the record. This proposal is not reviewing nor approving any specific use or facility. Rather, this application requires all current and potential future uses allowed in the EFU zone to be identified in order to utilize the sewer service. The applicant submitted an informational site plan indicating the likely location of the winery and tasting room. The application discusses the possible uses proposed by the applicant, but those uses will require future review. Goal exception criteria found in the OARs requires the county to adopt findings that demonstrate why there is no practicable alternative to a sewer system connection while also ensuring that the connection will not lead to serving uses other than those justified in the exception. The applicant has provided evidence in the form of a septic system feasibility letter, Agent's Exhibit G, that demonstrates there is no practicable alternative to a sewer connection for anticipated uses on the subject property. Staff finds the proposed sewer connection can be justified based on no practicable alternative to sewer services for applicants' anticipated uses, and there is a sewer line that currently runs immediately adjacent to the property in Griffin Creek Road and in Glory Sea Road. In addition to restrictions inherent with the zoning district, the county has adopted provisions within Section 3.6.3 of the LDO that severely limit the extension of sewer lines without justification. The proposed connection cannot be used to justify levels of development inconsistent with what would otherwise be allowed in the EFU zoning district. The connection can only serve rural land uses. The evidence submitted by the applicant supports the approval of an amendment of the Comprehensive Plan map for an exception to statewide planning goal 11 to allow connection to the adjacent RVSS sewer line and to add the subject property to area of special concern ASC 2003-1, Goal 11 exception areas. For these reasons, staff recommends approval. Should the Planning Commission agree with staff's recommendation, a recommendation for approval will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Pretty comprehensive file, it looks like. So, according to your testimony that you just gave, the application appears to meet the standard for the Goal 11 exception. Are there any standards that are unmet? Are there any standards that are unmet in this application?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ed, John?
This is sort of a general question, Dawn. Is this approval just for this one connection? If they were allowed to build more facilities, would they have to come back and start over? Or does this cover the property?
So, all of the proposed future uses have to be noted because they're limited to what future uses they note in this application.
So, if it isn't noted now, it's not included?
That's right.
Thank you. But it does cover the whole, not just the tax lot it's on now. It covers the whole ownership.
It covers the subject properties.
Thank you.
So, Dawn, question I have on Page 90, 91, 92, those maps, you know, I'm not sure why it's there. We have an existing sewer line map. That makes sense. It doesn't explain what the red zone is and where the subject property is. I can infer and read between the lines and where the map is. It's totally included, so it's just a moot point. But what are we gaining from 90, 91, 92?
So, these maps were submitted by the applicant, and they're showing where the existing sewer lines are.
So, what's the red zone?
I don't see in the legend for the red zone, but I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's agent when.
Okay, we'll hold that off until we get to your presentation. And it would have been handy to have the subject property, you know, outlined on that so we know it's entirely on it, not just partially or not at all.
Understood.
Okay, so that was a simple question. No else? Good report and good documentation here, too.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant.
Good morning. My name is Dan Conner. Just to repeat your question, I don't even want to speculate. The purpose of the exhibit was to show. I'm just loud. Okay, yes. Not sure what that's about. Don't want to speculate about it. But just to be clear, that there is existing sewer line facilities in Griffin Creek. It's an eight-inch line towards the southern part of the property. As you head north, it turns into a 12-inch line. There's an eight-inch line on Glory Sea Road. And just to be absolutely clear, Garrett West, the Associate in Office, prepared this and is, there is no extension of the sewer line being proposed in conjunction with this application. I just bring that up because in some of the findings, you know, after it was submitted, Garrett and I were talking, Garrett West, the Associate in my office, is that a lateral connection, meaning the private connection to the sewer line, is not considered an extension of the sewer facility. So, just want to make sure we're all clear on that. And the reason, the reason why we're doing this is it's, I don't know if you showed an aerial, if you have an aerial photograph, it's, and this is, when we, before we even submitted this, we reached out to DLCD, which is our standard course of action on a Goal 11, to see if they had any concerns. But as you can tell by the aerial, the entire property is in vineyard production right now. In the applicant, it is the John and Brenda Ramos Trust, but they're the, with Somar LLC. You guys may have heard of Somar because they're basically a group out of Napa that's been buying some vineyard properties and moving into the area. And so, clearly, on a commercial system, why would we want to do a commercial septic system on this type of property where we would have to take out approximately five acres of vineyard to accommodate the system when we have an existing facility right in the right-of-way next door? Another component of this application is if, if the map on the screen now was zoomed out more, you would see that this property is basically surrounded by Goal 11 exception properties, most of which came in when they did, I want to say it was about 2010, John Ren's DLCD, when they did the kind of the comprehensive Goal 11 remapping. And so, as part of the application, and just to be clear to people in the audience, is this application is, is absolutely limited to the right to connect to the existing sewer facility. It has nothing to do with the ultimate use of the property, and the plan for the property is that it would be developed with a winery and tasting room, and on the southern parcel, I can't remember if that, I believe that's tax lot 900, near the southern boundary, there would probably at some point be a dwelling established, and that would just be for a farm manager dwelling type use. But as part of the, the application requirements, we're supposed to show like an intended use of the property, and that's why we have the site plan. But the, the neighbor comments in opposition, you know, fall into the standard misunderstanding because we have a site plan that it appears that we are coming in for a tasting room, winery approval, which is not the case. It's just a component that we're required to satisfy coming in. I'll tell you what, on this one, this is maybe more information than you want to know, but I'll just give it to you anyway. It's like, so, we initially, we reached out to DLCD. We were working with Dawn throughout the process. Kevin Young, the Senior Urban Planner at DLCD, is like, we have no issue with this Goal 11 exception application. Oh, about a few months into the application review process, a different land use consultant, you'll see, you probably saw my, the email, I think it was in March of last year or some point, that between me and DLCD is, and that just came about because a local land use consultant that I will not name tried to get a Goal 11 exception based on a, I can't remember exactly, it was just a denial letter or from DEQ or RVSS, not going through the required process, tried to circumvent it. DLCD got worked up a little bit, talked to them, and I had a specific conversation with Kevin Young. Dan and he assured me we're not worried about this. So, okay, no issue. Then, just more recently, Kevin Young reached out to me, and so did Josh Lombombard, and said, and they asked, could you please just supplement the record with the denials that have occurred around the property? Because they were, they asked if I would file a DEQ application to receive a denial, and which I resisted because I don't want, DEQ is kind of a train wreck as an agency now, and I don't want to be waiting six months, pay these fees. We would have to take out vineyards for our test pits. And so, then they said, please just submit supplemental information into the record, and that's why there was a submittal not too long ago. That's, that's what that is for, just to give you some context. And hopefully, these Goal 11 applications will cease to exist in the next couple of years. Just consulting with National Marines Fishery Service, especially in light of this application because this property is 220 feet from Griffin Creek, that National Marines Fishery Service is the belief that Goal 11, as applied in Jackson County, violates the Endangered Species Act. So, I'm anticipating a consultation between the feds and the state about this. And so, hopefully, in the next couple of years, if there's, if there's an existing sewer facility. And so hopefully, in the next couple of years, if there's an existing sewer facility that people would be able to connect into it without spending $15,000, $20,000 going through this process. That's way more information you want to know, but I just wanted to give you a little update. And so if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. The record is complete, and we believe we meet the standards and the criteria, but I'm open to any questions.
I want to follow up on what you just said.
Okay.
So I agree with that, that people who are near the sewer line should be nearly required to look into it. Does that also, would that agreement, do you think, also include extending the sewer line where it could be where it would interfere with the water of the US?
See, this is very speculative. I'll answer, but my, just based on the discussions, that it would not, the changes, like if you had to extend a sewer facility, you would still be subject to GOAL 11?
No, I guess I'm looking at it from the other way. Would National Marine Fisheries lobby that everybody should have to hook up to the sewer whose septic system would be prone to leak?
I can answer that directly because I've had specific conversations with like Chuck Wheeler at National. They were, this was a few years ago, I was doing a project in Central Point, and it was at that point that they found out about GOAL 11. And I'll just tell you, his response was, he was horrified that this was actually a state rule, in their opinion, that where there's a regional sewer system, everyone in the valley should be required to connect to the regional sewer system.
Everybody?
Everybody. Because of the, if it's reasonably available, that, I'm dealing with wildlife biologists, Commissioner Elliott. I mean, there is passion there, which I totally respect and appreciate. But he was giving me these examples about how sewer systems, because we have, some of the salmon species are on the endangered species list, and we provide habitat, that septic systems almost, they're better now, but they're notorious for leaching into the groundwater, getting into the stream system. Under his opinion, which I'll say may be a little extreme, it was a take under the Endangered Species Act. And so there, and they were very complimentary, I must just throw this in, about RVSS's facilities, and actually, RVSS, their stormwater requirements that we have to comply with because it's a pretty rigid standard. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it does in a way. That's, I think that's something that is coming.
Right, it is.
And even if we don't want it, it's coming.
And what has happened, like if you guys just remember on the floodplain stuff, about in where the state was, the litigation had started in Washington under the FEMA program. Oregon knew it was coming, but Oregon did not react, and then that's why Oregon got sued. I can't remember what group was suing the states over it. And that forced the consultation between FEMA and NIMPs, and I don't know if you guys remember all that going on, and then we weren't going to be able to build in the floodplain, but then all of a sudden, that just disappeared. I mean, we have new rules, but my point of this thing is, I'm encouraging the state and the feds to do the consultation before the lawsuit comes. And so that's kind of the strategy, is to get out ahead of it, address it, but just based on, because the state has certain planning concerns about just extending sewer system, the sewer, the main sewer facilities, I just don't think that would, that would still be subject to GOAL 11.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I got a simple one. I looked this up on Google Earth or Google Maps, and on there, there's a little tag that says Dean's Boom Lift Rental. You know anything about that?
I have no idea what that is. I've been on the property multiple times. There is nothing there. There was like a little shack or something on the...
Some pastime or somebody mislocated it.
I think it's a mislocation. I don't, I'm pretty certain this was part of the Root Family complex, and you know, that's where it was acquired from, so yeah.
Boom Lift, I guess, doesn't connect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll just reserve the right for rebuttal, please. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Okay, good. It's going along smoothly. I'll open the public hearing now, and we will accept testimony from the public. Anybody, is a sign-up sheet? Anybody sign up? I think Dan did, but he's already spoken. Wait, wait.
Mr. O'Connor.
Pardon?
Mr. O'Connor.
Yeah. Did you want to sign up?
If it's, if there's an opportunity at this late time, I will.
My name is... First, then we'll have a record of that.
Okey-dokey, I'll be patient with my... My name is Alan Bookta. My address is 2704 Seringa Drive, which on your aerial photo would be just on the upper left-hand corner of the subject property. I guess I'm here speaking on behalf of supporting the proposal. We have lived at the, on our property on Seringa Drive for over 45 years. I remember when the subject property was a pear orchard. I remember when the subject property was requested to be removed from EFU to turn it into multifamily housing. It was denied, I'd say thankfully, and then the property laid fallow for some time until it became a vineyard. I support the idea of the tasting room and the winery development because in the use of EFU, it's untypical to have some other additional commercial type activity going on, like a tasting room. And I think it's a kind of a good balance between exclusive farm use and some commercial activity. So I just am saying, as a nearby resident, and my son lives right to the east of the southeast corner of the property, it's a nice area to navigate in. The opportunities to connect the tasting room to a sewer system, like the goal activities were mentioned, to facilitate proper disposal of septic, as opposed to taking out five acres of vineyard in order to make a suitable system. It's, it seems like a pretty good way to deal with something that's good for the valley and good for the vineyard and good for, I think it'll be good for the neighborhood. So it's my testimony. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
No rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay. And that's all the sign-ups for today? Okay, no other questions, then we can make a motion to admit exhibits.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennington?
Yep.
Commissioner Labanino?
Yes.
Okay, no further testimony or questions. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and proceed to deliberations.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of discussion, motion to approve File 439-23-00011-LRP, a minor comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for an exception to statewide planning GOAL 11 to allow the connection of an RVSS sewer line and to add the subject property to Area of Special Concern 2003-1 GOAL 11 exception area.
Second.
Did you preface that with approval?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you.
And Sarah seconded it?
Second, yeah.
Okay, I guess we get a vote? Okay, let's do that, too. Any deliberations? I don't know.
It was pretty straightforward to me, so...
Comments from others? Deliberations?
Mr. Chairman, staff testified that the application meets the standards for this exception, and staff also testified that there were no contraindicating elements in the application. So there appears to be no reason not to approve it.
Looking at the public comments, there's very few opposed to it, and they're just worried about traffic and increased, you know, noise. All can be mitigated, and it's within the realm of that zoning area. So I think we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Daley?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennington?
Yes.
Commissioner Labanino?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is closed, and meeting is adjourned.
Are we done, Mr. Chairman?
Other business from Ted or planning staff?
We are on. Just have a very busy schedule coming up. May and June are already getting booked up, so I'll let Patty give you the dates on it, when are, do you have that with you, Patty? I just threw Patty in there.
I have both dates in June. Do you have them? I do.
Okay. With that, that's all I had for update.
Thanks, Ted.
So May 23rd is going to be a training session with county council, and June 13th is the ADU study session, and then June, oh, May 21st is the joint commission meeting. But the June, I want to say 27th? Is that the? 27th is the ADU public hearing.
What month?
June.
June. 6/27, ADU public hearing.
Correct. And then 6/13 is a study session for ADUs, and May 21st is the joint public hearing, and then the training session with county council is May 23rd.
Okay.
Well, that's the next meeting, Dawn, the 23rd of May.
Correct.
21st, actually, with the county commissioners.
Oh, 21st, yeah, the joint commission meeting between the BOC and UOL.
Thank you. Okay, we are adjourned. What time is it? It's closed.
9:46.
Good job. There it is.
Good job, Mr. Chairman.